Good evening. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Council of Long Beach, July 20, 2012. We have a roll call, Councilman Delarue.
President.
Councilman Mandela.
President.
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 President McGinnis.
President.
President Tenda.
President.
Mr. President, please. The President would like to present to the Council now, the president of the Council.
President McGinnis, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome to our second meeting in July. I heard that summer's going good so far. What was wrong with the city attitudes before?
Thank you. I think that the statement from Brad, how his name is, is... Thank you. This is from the... I am reading this on behalf of the entire City Council and the City men. A partnership requires mutual respect. In recent months, Long Beach residents have been bombarded with messages about policing in the city of Long Beach. Here are just a few examples of what our residents have experienced. False and inflammatory declarations about the loss of public safety. Racist and false assertions of overpolicing in North Park. Baseless personal attacks made against New Commissioner Ronald Walsh. Ridiculous allegations of defunding of Long Beach Police budgets. It would help to know the source of these messages for our friends in England to put them into context, but most of them were issued anonymously. There is no legitimate basis for these attacks. Your City Council has seen these false statements and wants you to know that the public safety is not at risk. Police budgets are not being refunded, and changes that are being piloted by Commissioner Walsh are data-driven initiatives intended to efficiently improve the application of public safety resources. Regrettably, the Long Beach PBA attacked Commissioner Walsh during the police commissioner search process and from the moment he began his new position in February this year. We believe these attacks are simply nonsense. Commissioner Walsh is making modern policing not a politics of priority. He is opening up the lines of communication with our residents to truly put the needs of our neighbors in first position. He is committed to the ongoing training and support of our police department workforce. In short, through City Council and the City Manager, we believe Commissioner Walsh is the right person to lead this department, and we are excited at the new perspectives and energy he brings to our community's public safety needs. In the end, we must all recognize that our community and its residents are engaged in partnership with the members of the City of the Long Beach Police Department. And like all the relationships, they must be founded on mutual respect, even when disagreements or challenges arise. We don't want any more chaotic and divisive reputational impacts to our community. Thus, we ask PBA leaders to restore goodwill by re-aging with our stakeholders and community in a positive and supportive manner. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Also, I just wanted to make note that we did... I met with the committee that put the police reform together. We talked about the issues that have been head-prints and how they affect the city and how they affect the community. What they did tell me that there was a part two of their plan, where each one of those members will go out to the community. So not only will the city hear what the community has to say, that they will also hear what the community has to say. And so I just wanted to everybody to know that we're moving forward. We are listening to what's going on. And that all of the responses that I got since my email address was there, I would say when I look at them, about over 90% were positive. And the other 10%, another 5% asked questions, and another 5% agreed with the statements that were made. So I want the public to know that we do take everything seriously, and I did go back to the community, which is the committee that put the plan together. On that note, our first speaker, the world's second speaker under my report, is Police Commissioner Walsh. And by the way, today is Police Commissioner Walsh's birthday, so we wish him a happy birthday.
I hope you don't want to stand in the execution box like here. Thank you, thank you very much. Couple things I want to cover this evening. First is an issue that came up regarding fishing on ocean beach water. We had a couple incidents over the last week or so where people were doing some things, some casting, and some shark fishing, basically, on the beach. We thought that this was a very bad practice, actually, on the beach, because it's a catch-and-release type of thing where people catch the sharks within a few yards of swimmers bathing surface, and then re-releasing the shark into their tank, back into the waters. And as far as I'm concerned, that's a public safety problem. We are investigating fully right now. The Corporation Council is doing investigations. We're talking to Chief Paul Flesk and the life force. We're trying to come up with a way so that fishermen and swimmers and everybody can enjoy the ocean beach water at the same time. So working on it. We're not going to be prohibiting fishing per se. We're just going to make some modifications, and we'll get into it a little more deeply in the next week or two. We should have some resolution so that everybody can use it. We have other information that this coming weekend, there may be another beach party on the beach. I really don't want to give a date. I don't want to give the beach, and I don't want to give the time. But what I do want to do, and we'll put it up on our Facebook page, is tell everybody that's in our community if they can work with the police department. If you have kids, if you have young adults in your home, please to start with the appointment. It's not a local gathering. And we are making preparations to ensure that we have the proper law enforcement response in case something does happen, as well as we go to the law enforcement partners in the area so that if something were to happen, we'd be able to address it and keep it busy and safe. So we have plans. It does not, I want to be clear about this. It does say sunset party. It does reference that. It says beach party. And it's not the exact same flyer, but it is on social media. And some of our partners in the city have, some of our families and friends, have forwarded that to us so that we have the information so that we can get it out to the public and say, hey, if you can help us out, keep you for a bit. The last thing I want to talk about is coming up on August 3rd, and that's our National Night Out. We're looking to try and really have this to be a special night. It's going to be City's launching party event. It's going to be right out front on August 3rd from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. We have a lot of tables out this year. This is going to be around 21 tables out there. Long Beach Reach, Long Beach Latino Association, Northern Park Civic Association, Northern Park Crisis Prevention and Post Intervention Team, Long Beach Aware. Libraries will be out there, the OK Center's out there, Nestor County Conference, K-9 Unit, the Senior Center, the U.S. Host Guard. 21 partners. We also have several sponsors this year. I know the City Council will be quite generous to give some money towards the event. Thank you very much. Chewbacca, a new vendor of us, is also going to be giving us some money. And it's Motorola. The COA, Van Gogh's Association, as well as the PBA are giving money towards the event as well. Long Beach Howdy already started taking a trip and supporting us out there. So we're going to put on a group of restaurants. So all in all, it's really a great way to sort of support the community and to build upon that community trust before. There's going to be chicken, hamburgers, hot dogs. We're going to have soft candy, popcorn, some popcorn, as well as the other bouncing toys, DJ, the gods say. Things are really made in the national house with the kids, too. So we're encouraging everybody in the community to come out and help us. And if you are a community group that we have not reached out to, feel free to call the police department, 1-800, if you'd like to participate and be part of our National Night Out. After our event completes, the Penalties Center, who's also going to be out there, is going to have some bags to hold, and their own form of National Night Out at the Penalties Center. So trying to really build a nice community, community kind of field of night. Do you have any questions on that?
It's important also to note that on the night of the National Night Out, it is also the City Council meeting. The council meeting will be held outside. We'll be here to greet in the... So that we can also, all of us, can enjoy talking to the community as well as enjoying the National Night Out.
My apologies, City Manager. You did ask me to mention that, so I'm sorry. Any questions?
Just a time again.
Starts at 4:00 in the afternoon, and it goes till 7:00 out on Kennedy Plaza. And the following is going to go with the Penalties Center. So if they wanted to do their own, we asked them if they would work with us. They said yes, and they made their own follow-ups. We should, how we promote it? Can we help promote it? So what we've done so far is we've put it up on our Facebook page, going out on our Instagram page. It's on the City Facebook page and on the City website. We printed out about 500 flyers for our camps, for the rec centers. Hopefully, it's going to go with it. You guys will have the flyer. We're putting out new store windows. And we're also having another 200 flyers that our officers are handing out as needed. So trying to get the word out in the community. I actually received a couple of phone calls today. I got one from a Christian church. They were saying, hey, can we get some flyers? We're letting our congregation know. So we're letting the house and worship know around town as well. I know Pastor Moses asked for them. So we're really trying to get the community out. It's great to see everybody coming together. Thank you. It's hoping it's successful and it doesn't work. Because it's Tuesday. It should rain on Saturday.
Now, good morning. The next speaker is Commissioner Joe Bray. He gave us a beach update along with Chief Deliss.
I'll be in brief. Perfect segue for Commissioner Walsh to have a rain on Saturdays. We're in for the heat of the summer as far as the beach waters are concerned. Thankfully, we had a tremendous preseason, as you can see with that saying. Of course, we're on our own financially. Confident with another one that I have to go with. The weather is going to get better, and we will be busy. I agree with this fact, so it's... The weekdays have been productive. The present heat that we have is very good to us in terms of the whole place. The beach is on the beach, so we're making a revenue there. Like I said, we're in for the heat of it now. There's a lot of other stuff going on. The operations are already running, so now it's kind of like switching to stuff like pretty who would take the boots around and say, I don't know how to meet changes in which areas are busy that weren't traditionally busy and accommodating crowds in areas that we normally didn't have crowds. Speaking on behalf of superintendent camp of Beach Fest, who's still recovering from a horrific event of bronchitis, he just wanted me to provide an update that we do in areas that are walkways are next on their hit list as far as the cleanup. And then one other area that I wanted to mention to the council and the City Manager and I saw briefly this afternoon, and I mentioned to the public that today, myself and the playground specialist, site specialist, and visible playgrounds, we're in tech. There's a lot of goods out there. I'll prepare a report hopefully over the next few days and prioritize those items which need to be addressed immediately. Something that we're already addressed today. But then some of the stuff that we're going to have to put on front curtains, back curtains, George Frizio nights, whole briefly. He's well-intended and is aware of most of the issues of prioritizing ways to find money to get something, so that he's going to be there. Other than that, the record is up and running. It's the middle of summer, and everywhere is... Any questions?
The foundation of long-haul railroad tickets, beach passes, is that now? Is that, did they get that up and running?
Yeah, that was effective July 1st.
July 1st.
And it's been successful. And we were starting to have a fair amount of successful people like on the beach passes. I mean, the thought was that the daily pass was going to be the easier application. I mean, almost on a daily basis. And I can provide you with an updated that. But we had as many as like 500, 600 on Sunday, which, you know, that was a number probably before 1:00 p.m. I wouldn't assume five numbers, but at least that started to be better on too. So like I said, we're all on our own financially with whatever that we have.
I would ask to come tonight and talk about these handicap wheelchairs that we have. Now, we've been using these on patrol for probably about, I'd say, 30 years. These are great for people that cannot get to the water by just walking down there and jumping in the water. We transport them from the wheelchair. We put the wheelchair side by side here, and then we pull a handle up so they can slide over. We put the handle back in, and we are ready to go. We're ready to go. Now, in order to get these, we have about, right now, about seven. We have about, we have seven. And to get these, to use these, what you do is you call Lifeguard Headquarters, 431-1810. And we will deliver this right to the ramp that you go down to the beach. If you're on Riverside, or if you're on Long Beach Road, we will bring that ramp to the people that need it. And they really work great. We do have Multimax on some of the beaches, which really makes work even better. But we also recommend that you have some with you so you could push these because the duties we have on the beach, especially if we get a good crowd there, we can't just stand around and push the people down the beach. If there's no one there, of course, we lend our assistance. We also have two other chairs that are, actually, we have four because we partner up with the Scudin Serve. And these are long arms chairs that the handicap person can actually lie in. And what we do then, we push the people in the water so they can get in the water. These do not go with the water, but you can, of course, you can push them down to the shoreline and put your feet in the water. But these things are invaluable to the handicap person, the people that cannot make it on their own down to the beach. But, you know, it's amazing because the smiles you see on these people that can't even, maybe the first time down to the water in years until we bring this up, and they... It's just a great, great thing to see. So if anybody's interested, 431-1810, Lifeguard Headquarters. And we will deliver this to the... Deliver this to the... Anyway, thanks for coming back to the beach. Thank you. Chief McGinnis. Thank you, I appreciate it, Washington. Last year, you had a former lifeguard. He was 100 years old. And I remember seeing that one of the... One of his many wishes was to jump in the water again. And the lifeguard assisted him down to the beach. And it was a great thing to see. The gentleman was here back, I think he was like, from 1938 to like 1940 something. And he said, boy, I'd love to go down to the water and put my feet in. So put him in the chair. And we'll all wait after the water. And the smile on his face for the first time touching the water was incredible. And that's what we're all about. We're here to help people. And so the more people that get to use this, the better off the city is still. Any other questions? Is there a circle wall today? Is there a circle wall today? Today, they had, our City Manager was down there watching it too. The Viscari School have a, it's a handicap school for children with severe handicaps. We used all of our seven chairs plus four longer chairs to put the kids in the wheelchairs and put them in the water, which they don't get that opportunity to get by just walking there. So again, these things are, we're on the right, and I hope we get more response from the outside communities and the Long Beach community. So again, that number is 431-1810. And yes, 931. Joe, welcome.
Chief, is that one of the donated chairs?
Oh, yes, this is, we had it last year. It was the last year, it was actually, it was the spring. The Roswood, this is in memory of Roswood Innerfield. And she's in Long Beach. And it says 1930 to 220, sand in her shoes. So we did get two of these. These are pretty expensive, by the way. They cost anywhere from $5,000 to $7,000, depending on what type you get. So if anybody wants to donate some chairs to us, we're donating. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay, the last speaker that we have is Ena. Her controller is, she's going to introduce. CMA, who's been with us, well, has been here with me for about the last year and a half when they were here prior to beginning here. So Ena, if you'd like to come up and do the introduction. And we're going, it's going to, they're going to discuss the credit.
Good evening. And as the gentleman said, I will briefly introduce CMA. We have two CMA representatives this year. For one, two CMA's are from East Coast and I'm her advisor. They're here to discuss Moody's Action on July 8th. Moody's rating services, downgraded to B. And that's, they're here to talk about the downgrade, what's it, and how to get out of it.
Good evening. And I'm Richard Tortora. I'm the president of Capital Market Dividend Group CMA.
Mr. Tortora. I've been told that we need to speak louder.
Oh, you might have to say that.
Thank you.
And then probably loud. Okay. So again, I'm Richard Tortora. I'm the president of Capital Market Dividend Group CMA. My firm has served as independent financial advisor to the city for a number of years. I'm required to make a statement before I see the cover of that statement. It's simply this. CMA is an independent municipal advisor, registered with both the United States Securities Management Commission and the Municipal Securities Rulemaking Board. Our professional staff is tested and licensed by the FTC and the MSRB. Eleven of us hold municipal advisory licenses. I hold that license in addition to a critical plate. I'm a headquarter here on Long Island. We represent about 375 jurisdictions almost exclusively throughout the year of state. The reason for my being here this evening is, as Ena said earlier, we had a significant credit event occur two weeks ago when Moody's Investor Service downgraded the city's credit rating into the BWA 3 category and put a negative outlook on it. If I have someone who can remember the next slide, please. So my intention is to have a pre-presentation, maybe 10 minutes, and then respond to any questions to my back. So first and foremost, let's just talk about what a credit rating is. A credit rating is an independent assessment by a credit rating agency, a nationally recognized credit rating agency, of a jurisdiction's ability and willingness to pay its debt in full and on time. There are three major credit rating agencies. The action taken two weeks ago was by Moody's Investor Service, which is the premier credit rating agency in the United States, certainly in New York State. They rate more local credits, local being counties on down, county, city, and villages, schools, fire, etc. They're creating more of those in New York State than any of the other three rating agencies. I stand in the fourth is the second rating agency. Fish ratings is the third. And then another player that really doesn't rate local credits much, it's Crowder Rating. Next slide, please. This next slide is worth in that it shows the credit rating scale that Moody uses to rate credits. If you're doing everything right, and you have strong economics and demographics, and that means you have a strong tax base, low unemployment, significant large taxpayers, getting on employers, basically, everything's going right on your economy. You have strong financial performance. Your budget to act with performance is good. You have fund balances, you run operating surpluses. You have a strong management team, a team that is consistent, has ongoing relationship with the jurisdiction, is well-trained, experienced, etc. And you have manageable debt. You have debt that's been outstanding typically at fixed interest rates. So it's not quite simple what the principal interest payments were based. You funded your capital project. You funded your care clubs and the debt is manageable. The median credit rating for municipalities in New York is double A3, A83. So if you look at that table, that bar you go on the left, you'll see that the best rating you can get is AAA. And there was pretty few and far between. Our firm has distinction of representing both the AAA credits in New York State. In this neck of the woods, AAA credit would be on Long Island, Town of East Hampton, Town of Hurp Haven, some school district, maybe Garden City, maybe Manhattan, St. Point Village. There's certainly some on Long Island with the wealth community. If you look where the city is, so from AAA, you go to double A category with model R of 123, the single A category... The single A, the single A category, again, with model R123, one D is strong. Once you drop below the A3 category, many financial institutions have their own investment policy that don't allow them to bid in whole paper that's rated below that A category. So your potential universe of investors, particularly, there's still plenty of market access in the BWA category, which is not as many players as there are in the A category above. As you can see, the city is currently rated, following this downgrade, of BWA3. And it has a negative outlook, and that's important. BWA3 means you're right at the threshold. It's still investment rating, but you're right at the threshold. But that negative outlook is what's concerning. What the negative outlook says is that Moody's has the opinion that things are somewhat unsettled in the city. They're not quite sure what direction you're going in. They think things could go bad in here in the foreseeable future. Hence the negative outlook. The reason why I think that, of course, if I'm an investor and I borrow a bond from the city of Long Beach, those bonds may be coming to over the next 10, 20 years with a negative outlook on a BWA3 credit. It's a very good question that those bonds become sub-investment grade while I'm holding. And that's a dangerous thing for the bondholders because they, if I, if I wanted to sell those bonds before they matured, I have a little challenge selling them. Um, they wouldn't sell as well and as easily if they, if they had community in the investment grade category. Just a couple more slides. The situation of the city finding itself, it's not new. Um, there was a very significant downgrade to the city in 2011. I don't think my firm was working with the city about 10 years ago. But there was a five notch downgrade, which is a very significant downgrade. And that's probably as much reflection on the rating agency as it is on you because no one should get downgraded five notches. You should get downgraded a notch. Then maybe your outlook will change to negative. Then maybe you get downgraded again. There shouldn't be a precipitous drop. That means they kept their eye on the ball. They weren't watching closely enough. And they, they just shouldn't drop that that much. That's almost unheard of.
The city dropped.
If I mean, Moody's.
When did Moody's drop?
No, no, Moody's dropped because they should be looking at credit until fiscal crisis in February. There was, it was a, Moody's didn't have a policy to monitor credits on an annual basis. And one of their executives, he was in public domain. We had some credits that were actively rated five years ago, seven years ago, which was not a good thing for investors. One of the things that they can rely on the ratings of Moody's that can be fixed. There was a bit of a sea change that occurred after the, the financial accident. A lot of analysts at Moody's, fish, S and D, got stolen away by the big investors, right, the Rochester, within the Oppenheimer, within the Besto. They said, "We don't want, we want to have more control of this credit rating, look like we're the premier investor, these rate matters, key matters, so we have a more accurate assessment." So this, while a credit rating is still very important, it maybe isn't as important as it was before this happened because now the, the investors have their own analysts. They always had their own analysts. But now they have more of them, they do more of the judging.
Mr. Tortora, I just want to leave a point here. Back in 2011, some of us were here then. And some of us looked at the balance sheet and already knew this was a problem back then.
I'm sure.
Some council members actually spoke out about it. I was around the council at the time. But the audits, which were published, all were clear. The clips of the balance sheet, the, the, the balance sheet was going in the wrong direction. So this is not a surprise and it, and the problem starts here.
Understood, understood, of course. Um, so again, I don't need to go through all these steps. We're just suffice to say the big downgrade occurred in 2011. Then you see you're starting making progress with an upgrade to 15, another upgrade to 16, which hopefully you'd expect. You're going up, you're going down, you're staying in the draw. But then in 2019, you started to move in the other direction again. You downgrade to a BWA2 with a negative outlook again a couple of weeks ago. You downgrade to a BWA4. Next slide please. Just a little bit of an update on what the rating report said that Moody's issued. The Moody's issued this report on July 8th. Um, it cited the problem, the credits, France City. It has a large and growing tax base. And you have oversized by the New York State control. That report because you have financial effort on the state level overlooking your ongoing funding. The credit challenges, the 22 budget includes appropriate revenues. We spend down fund balance, spend down reserves. And of course, the big challenge, the A-level judgment that came out in, uh, I guess, just a couple of months now. Um, we always look to, what can make the rating go up? What can make the rating go down? Ratings are dynamic and you can influence, I mean, no one can influence the weather that the folks in the before me. Um, but what could make your rating go up? If indeed you can finalize the settlement, the favorment that doesn't crush the city financially. Um, if you have a plan to fund outstanding liability with recovery revenue or reduction, elimination of settlement. If you can basically balance your budget, adopt a budget that is truly balanced with that over-reliance on the core line shot. You know, you're getting some ARP money. And it's not insignificant, but it's not going to say the day or any future. But you are getting some non-ARP money. Factors that get into a downgrade, what can push you into that? We don't like to call it general, maybe, uh, junk bond. What can push you into the sub-investment grade? If it's an unfavorable outcome in A-level judgments, or if they say, "We want our 131 million. We want our interest at a certain rate of about a million dollars a month, and we're not giving up anything," that could be a problem. Um, if there's further governance weaknesses. Now, this is important. This is the governance team before you. Um, I have to know that our city manager has a contract that isn't going, you know, isn't into the future. That could be problematic. If I'm a rating agency and I'm not sure who's funding the city, who's managing it, that would be a concern for me. So the key people, the city manager, the president, the council, the city attorney, the CFO, those are the people that investors look to you, the other folks that are making decisions and running the city. Um, if indeed there's continued increases of long-term liability, um, if the, if there are weakening reserves and liquidity, you know, all jurisdictions should have some care reserves, ready date on due to real stabilization. Um, to extend, you start spending those down, you don't have flexibility. That becomes even more of a problem for a credit like the BWA3 because your market access is a bit limited, much more so than if you were in the A category or the W category. Finally, the next slide. I would like this one as well because people say, "Well, what's the thing? Why do credit ratings matter so much?" And this is a clear illustration of what money costs based on credit rating. So we subscribe to a service called MMD Municipal Market Dividend. Every business day of the year around four o'clock in the afternoon, they circulate interest rates scale. They saw what occurred in the market across the country that day. And they give us interest rate scale based on credit quality. So we have a AAA scale, a scale that is for debt, so with bond insurance, double A scale, single A scale, BWA scale. It trades down extraordinarily low. I never thought that these had spoken in my lifetime. We just haven't seen this before. Um, we sold, maybe, where in the market sometimes three or four times a day, sometimes 10, 12 times a week. Interest rate statistics go there. Um, if you were going to be selling, say, a 10-year bond for the, uh, for the city, you might expect with your BWA rating, maybe you would sell that bond with the 10-year maturity with the yield to investors around 1.4% or 1%. Extraordinarily low. I remember when a BWA credit would sell a 10-year bond at 5%. So rates are very, very low. So if indeed you are just wanting to judge, maybe you're funding it in a very low interest strike, so that's maybe the silver lining. But again, if you go to that, that 2031 law, so what that represents is, what is a bond going to pay with investor? What kind of yield is that bond going to pay with investor if it's AAA? So if I'm borrowing a AAA-rated bond that matures 10 years, you know, I might expect to get 81 basis points. When we talk about interest rates, we talk about basis points. 100 basis points and 1%. So 81 basis points, just over three quarters of 1% interest on that yield, on that bond for the investor. Uh, if it's insured issue, it'll yield about 1%. If it's a, if you should rate it double A, it'll yield 14 basis points. Single A, 106. And BWA is just under 1.5%. We don't have a scale to, you know, below the BWA level because it's difficult to write it for. So very simply, that's an overview of what credit ratings are, how they work, where you are, why it's a concern, and why I'm here to answer any of your questions. Thank you.
Um, Mr. Ivey, question. If you had to convert this complex formula numbers to somebody's personal credit, so 800 on a final score would be excellent credit. Therefore, if you want to get a call, mortgage, you would, you'd have leverage looking to lend. And therefore, your rating would probably be very competitive. If you had to convert this scenario, how would you do it? Just to simplify a couple?
I don't know, probably go straight to the table. I know if it's a 800 percent store, you know, people want to loan them money. But the old, back to the old, the little, the loan money to people who don't need it. But if you're a real strong credit agent, it's probably doing everything right. You power them up from a money station if you have a service. Um, in your instance, uh, you would not find, if you were an individual with a BWA3 with a negative outlook, people would not be down to get your loan on money. Probably be very hard pressed, hard lenders. And when you do, they would draw you free because you're risk. Is this individual with this low vital, or are they going to pay back in full and on time, probably a question. It's probably someone who maybe has history of unemployment, or history of low earning, history of maybe not paying the debt on time, things like that, maybe they don't have assets that they can use to collateralize among.
So stability and accountability are two words that we mentioned. And it's very important to have a management team that's stable and continuous.
Absolutely. Thank you. One of the factors of the rating, we mentioned on one of the slides, for, for management being one of the core and allocate about 27 rating, just to manage them along. Thank you, you're welcome.
Mr. Tortora, in terms of the, uh, the lower rating, is there a material impact to our debt service numbers that we budgeted for this year, and if so, how much?
Good question, sure. Let me think about it. The lower rating only impacts due to debt over. Because when you issue your debt, you issue it at a fixed rate of interest. So what I think that's been outstanding, is that a fixed rate of interest, the rating goes down, the rating goes up. They're still paying at fixed rate of interest to investors. But as you go in the market, issue new debt, that rating is going to impact your cost of capital on that new debt. Can I answer your question?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
For us non-financial people to start climbing back up the ladder. I mean, is, is the first step we would go for from a negative to, let's say, a neutral rating?
Correct, stable.
So stable, and then?
Positive.
Positive, and then?
And then obviously a lot of positive. Correct. And that takes time because they don't change their ratings overnight. So when this rating is a long-term underlying rating, in which the rating agencies and the look at what the city has done maybe over the last three to five years, they look at your budget, they look at your fund balance, etc. They look at where you've been, they look at where you are right now. And then they project where they think you're going to be in the next maybe three to five years. And then they issue this long-term underlying credit rating. So it will take time to build that rating back up. But if you've been there before, if you've been in the BWA 1 category, which is significantly better, Moody's offered in that BWA category very well. But that BWA1, there's a likely to go from that, while I'm holding the debt, maybe it'll go to the A category, and it'll be that much more valuable.
Wasn't the saving grace that, to get us out the last time, was in fact the infusion of funds related to SuperSon, Sandy?
I'm sure it helped. But that in and of itself would save you. Um, this is a hateful judgment, put it with so significant. That in and of itself is enough to knock, to knock down a credit rating. I would, when, it is, so the attitude on this, this gentleman in Moody's, who we know very well, who's an interactive person, who's lived in Garden City, he's a big fan of the city, and he watches the city very closely. And when the A-level judgment first came out, I gave him a call. I was so good with the stadium. I gave the shout out to the call, I said, "Okay." So you heard the background in, in Long Beach, what do you think? He said, "You're ready to be double, so you're comfortable going to do, let's see what, let's see how it plays out." So they're watching very closely if they, if it needs settling and it settles at terms that the city can financially manage. That, that, I mean, is it enough to take out the negative outlook? Perhaps, because it's so significant, if you can work at it and arrange it that makes it, that's valid for the city going forward, that would be a big step in the right direction.
Moody's don't, is it not true that they kept, they do evaluate on a quarterly, you know, basis in general, but issue reports one to two times per year?
Um, so what happens is they, they've made a commitment to review a credit before the market's available at least once a year.
Right.
Credits that are particularly dynamic, where there's a lot going on, they might do more often than that. But this city, in terms of, it's not a, so we represent Southern County. Southern County issues, you know, six, seven hundred million dollars a day a year. But they're watching Southern very carefully. Not to say they're not watching closely, but, um, it'll take some time for them to, to, you know, move this credit around. They, they are watching, they're collecting. Right, they're reading stories that show the low lose. I reuse that, of course, every day. I just, and I'm always watching with some of the jurisdictions that I work with.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I just wanted to say that you all have worked with the city and created a debt dash, um, software that is actually for the credit rating, credit agencies. And so if you go on our website, you will see a link to debt dash. And then anytime a credit rating agency or any investor has a question, they go to that particular site to answer any of your questions. And that's very helpful because they want access to information. And so all you're really required to do is, pursuant to this FDC rule, Truthfully Strange Commission Rule 15C212, you know, the ongoing obligation to provide disclosure to your investors. But that obligation only required in the file and what if you find issues, they typically live in six months after this. And annual updates, some of the data that they were offering out. But we do that. Um, but with this debt dash, we can put in a site that's directly accessible by investors and the public. Other than that, it might be a valid interest rate to happen. I mean, a new employer comes into town. There's a, you know, new housing development that's still in mind. An existing employer, you know, increase in staff, or things like that. You know, good news and bad news in the future because investors don't like to be surprised. So the more proactive we can be and make access information available, that's going to help.
So this isn't going away?
Not, 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 not right now. I'd like to think it can help me develop a plan to maybe improve over time. But this is a rating you can do with, I would think, certainly with the balance this time, it's very likely to be balanced this year at minimum.
And there's no magic solution?
Yeah, there's nothing.
No, no fantasy?
It almost never is.
Nothing, right? But hard work and hard choices.
Yeah, exactly that. I'll just tell you, anecdote, one of our credits, one of the jurisdictions that I've worked with for a long time is a county in Southern New York. And they had all the problems you can imagine. They had their largest tax barrier by bankruptcy. Because they were county, they had to make, well, the underlying jurisdiction, jurisdiction, county, I mean, the county's whole, the dedication, all this activity, station. They were just in the middle of trouble. Then they were convengative, they pandemicated, the fiscal crisis hit them. Long story short, they were in an extreme hot suppression period. Last week, they got double upgrades, two-step upgrades for all of Moody's NS and V. And they're probably going to be in the focus of trouble for what we have to do to fix this. And they made a lot of conversations, you know, they raised the speed income, they closed the hospital with a big brain, with a big brain year after year after year. They raised the taxes, the energy tax, they made, they made tough choices. And they had, I mean, tax enforcement to do what they had to do. And some of it was painful, certainly. But in the long run, they're great. As a matter of fact, they sold debt today. I think at the lowest interest rate probably that they've ever seen ever. In 13, they sold a 20-year tax anticipation of 13 basis points for like 1/10 of 1%. Actually, real success story. It was doable.
So sometimes raising rates... So sometimes raising rates is looked at favorably by the willing market. It matters to your finances as well, to naturally revenue with your expense.
Yeah, I mean, so raising rates like tax rate, it's kind of know your audience. So if I'm an investor, or if I'm a credit rating agency, I want to see as much revenue coming in as possible. And real property tax revenue is the most solid revenue stream, because people pay their real property. So yeah, that would be a very credit positive event. And that goes to, I thought, this is the conversation I think, the two components of credit rating, your ability to pay, and your ability to pay really based on your wealth levels here. The value of your property that's subject to taxation, that's your ability to pay, that's the tax benefit. Your willingness, there's things like, do you raise rates when you have to? Do you impose new fees when you have to? To generate more revenue to support the day-to-day operations of the company.
Final, this council will budget a good rate of rate.
When you get credit rates, and that probably one of the things that kept the ratings up moving, like what they, you showed your willingness to make tough decisions, that raised rates when you needed to, that could certainly be being the credit positive event. Thank you. You're welcome.
The last thing I want to say about that is that as we are working on the restructuring, CMA is working with us, because we are working on a multi-year plan. I think that once we have that multi-year plan passed, then we will put it on our debt dash, and then we will start inviting Moody's. We will make sure that they see that we're moving a popular structure.
And multi-year plans are so favorable to the city, they want to know, even if it's not the greatest plan, they want to know your plan to get out of it, they want to know what your strategy is, they think, how realistic, why their assumptions, how realistic are their projections? And the more credibility that the plan has to the county, the more value it has.
Mr. Tatar, technically, we are supposed to already be submitting a multi-year plan, because we are in a distally stressed municipality. So we haven't been doing that for the past few years. So it just shows us, just shows you that the investments that we're making in the talent of our staff is really helping us even comply with things that we have already have not been complying with that we're supposed to.
Thank you. We can go to that.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Thank you so much. I'm glad you're tomorrow.
All right, thank you. Why don't we move on to our first public hearing?
First public hearing, CMA, President, Resolution Rating Rate for Long Beach Park and Long Island, across 106 East Park Avenue, Studio Four, First Farm Studio.
All right, so just for reference, the people in the room, this is the old shoe repair shop that's on East Park Avenue. So why don't you tell us a little bit about your business?
Sure, I'm sorry, can you give your name, or please? Or eight, ten, go. Let me give about my business. I started in a spa about ten years ago, and I first came to Long Beach. And I pretty much specialize in skincare, aesthetic services, and permanent makeup. And my business has gone over time. And now it's kind of going out of my room where I am now, and found this big location, and I'm very excited.
Nice problem with that. So I guess I'll get to make work here. So you expect between one and three employees?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Okay, and what are going to be your days of operation and your hours?
So probably the hours will be nine to seven, eleven to seven. Nine hundred and ten, I work technically. But we're going to have to extend it, obviously, because we have a lot of stuff. And the day of operation will probably be Monday, so Friday, probably Monday.
Any questions from the council members? All right, got any questions from the public? All right, seeing none, why don't we close that hearing, and why don't we get to vote on it now?
This is Councilor, item number two, Resolution Rating Rate for Long Beach Park and Long Island, across 106 East Park Avenue, Studio Four, First Farm Studio. Let's just move this out, show this out.
Yes, good luck.
Thank you.
That's what everybody does.
Yes.
Yes, good luck.
Why should I say yes?
Yes.
Yes, welcome to the new store, bro.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
The next public hearing is for Resolution Rating Rate for Long Beach Park and Long Island, across 106 East Park Avenue, Studio Four, First Farm Studio.
My name's James Wheeler, I'm the General Manager of Silver Dollar Care. This is Dr. Janet Verma, he's the Medical Director of Silver Dollar Care. To give you some background on our business, we have a portfolio of events in Queens, in Nassau County, this is the New York best location here in Long Beach.
All right, so this is the old, again, people in the audience just wonder where this is, the old Century Twenty-One Real Estate Agency next to the horizontal Cuba. So just to give them some reference, I'll tell them a little bit about that. Okay, so what kind of, how many employees is this building having?
Yeah, about ten employees.
Okay. And how many, like working in five, or is that?
No, it's equal, so we have four open seven days a week. So, yeah, equal.
All right, and then how many customers do you know play now, and they, they're, you know, in my?
At a time, at a dead.
Well, I had a time, by the way.
Yeah, three to four at a time.
Okay. All right.
Are you looking twenty-four hours, or?
No, our typical business hours now are ten to seven. We did ten to five.
Any other questions from the council? All right, seeing none, any questions from the public? All right, so let's close that hearing, and why don't we vote on that as well?
Item number three, Resolution Rating Rate for Long Beach Park and Long Island, across 106 East Park Avenue, Studio Four, First Farm Studio. Let's just move this out to this side.
I will. I will.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Thank you for picking Long Beach, and yes.
And you're good luck.
Thank you. I don't want that sound, good luck, without a question, people get sick. That's what I was just saying.
Our five public here tonight is the board's main vote for the reasons that the city will actually try to pass on the case.
So this is a straightforward amendment, they've just been changing the number of members, the party count from nine to eleven, Miss Moore is here to do a little background with her, I'm hungry out there.
Hello, good evening. I'm pleased to be here, Patty Moore, from the Economic Development Department. This is George Trepp, who is the Long Term Treasurer of the Arts Council, and one of the exemplary board members. The board is composed currently of nine members. They are very dedicated, they, well, when we completed first, we met on a regular basis. Now we've had, we call two, three, four times a month, even on Friday nights, that's ten first. They really want to see the arts flourish, for current artists, expand programs, they're working with police department, National Development, provide resources and volunteers. And it's a pleasure to work with them, and they really care, great for it, and we love the fact that we have more hardworking members who will do everything.
My name is George Trepp, working in Long Beach, currently the treasurer, before that I was vice president, almost president. We like to express our appreciation to the council, to the city manager, to the city staff that have helped us in the past and will continue to help us. We owe them, making arts flourish in Long Beach. And we also look forward to the expansion of the council, because we need all the help we can get, so we'll buy these, well, volunteers. We are currently working on a clean project, a lab called No Boys, which is in the north of Park, neighborhood. It's a park project, and we have a national development for the arts grant to do that. And we're working along with, that grant with a New York State Council on the Arts Grant. So we are working to get grants, and we're trying to now expand a little bit to see if we can develop it, develop it more. We realize there's a lot of developments in Long Beach, a lot of not popular organizations, a lot of NGOs, doing fundraising, but we want to join the game also. So we're in the game for grants, we're in the game for development, but we also enjoy the support of the council on a questionnaire basis. So thank you very much for your help.
Okay, any questions from the council? Uh, who's started? Clark, and I've just told the court council as well, I was reviewing the code for this section, the chains we're making. So which we're modifying is section two dash two fifty-one. Section two dash two fifty-two and section two dash two fifty-four are identical in there. So somebody put the same power break, it's what I don't know, we can do that? Is it a then here, or that's a separate then to those? Okay, so just pointed out that the same thing is in there twice. It's the identical power break. Okay, so you know questions from the council, any from the public? All right, seeing none, let's close that hearing.
Now, item number four, the board's main vote for the reasons for the city of Long Beach, all the answers are yes. Let's just move this out to this side.
I will.
Second?
I will.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Enthusiastically, yes.
Thanks for all your work, and yes. Okay, yeah, so I'm going to make a motion to go into executive session for a little bit. So I made a motion to go into executive session to discuss the medical, financial credit or employment history of a particular person or corporation, or that is leading to the appointment, employment promotion, the motion, discipline, suspension, dismissal or removal of a particular person or corporation.
I'm sorry. I will.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
And we're expecting the section of vocal motion on. The stream is going to end, and we should leave it up in just five minutes. So the city council, we're setting twenty-one, part two.
We'll be back in a little bit. Oh, sorry. Good. All right, why don't we get going?
Hey, why don't you go to the calendar? And once we have the party, the two plus twenty-one, we're going to move through it.
I will.
Second?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Okay, item number five, on the calendar, Resolution Establishment Proportion is in accordance with provisions of law for plenty of different property tax law.
Good evening, everybody. Mr. Flamer, our tax assessor is here today, so I'm sending you up an update on this. So adjusted base proportions, what is it? It limits the shift of taxes between the two classes of properties, homestead and residential and non-homeside. The adjusted base proportions has to be revised every year to reflect the current changes in the market value and take into consideration any physical changes and other changes to assess value. State law provides a shift by default to be five percent, but with the state's approval, under formal legislation, the council authorized to limit that shift to about one percent. Every year this happens, it's happening later and later. And this year, I believe, the legislation by the state is passed on July first. Simplistically, the adjusted base proportions cuts the tax by two parts, prevents any drastic shifts between residential and commercial tax rates. This year, it's not exactly one percent. There's a calculation, taking into consideration changes to assess value, like new construction, it's had changes in corporate cushions. But this is once approved by the council, certified, the calculation is sent to the state by the Department of Tax and Finance and the Office of Revenue and Tax Services, to their approval. Just for this initiative purposes, if the council did not approve this legislation, the next year's calculation will be based on five percent adjusted base proportion. This year, this results in a higher shift to the non-homeside property. Current twenty-one, twenty-two tax increase was four point eight seven percent for homestead, and ten point seven one percent for non-homeside. So if we didn't use this one percent calculation, the tax rate should be within three point four or three percent for homestead, and fifteen point zero five percent for non-homeside. That's, that's long.
All right, I guess it's just important to know this comes from the state. This is something the state thinks that we have to follow. So with that, we voted this every year, but that reading. Any questions from the council? All right, any from the public? All right, so what's that? All right, so last time. Good evening, all of us in Long Beach. Um, every year we go over this, every year I ask that we put in what it was, what the change is. Why can't we do that? He just told you what the change was. No, he doesn't. What, what was the home, home set base proportion last year? Right now, it's point seven four oh four two seven two one. What was it last year that's on this? We want to see what the change is. And I'll have that for, for the day.
Um, next week, or a few weeks from now.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, seeing none, let's move on to item six.
And six is a resolution authorized by the city manager to issue a purchase order versus fall transport to Long Beach Council for Welsh responsible debt.
Is this, is the Fabrizian?
Uh, good evening, everyone. Um, yes, the service will authorize the city manager to bring in the universal ready mix. To supply, transport, and deliver concrete, uh, bids were received in the office of purchasing on Thursday, June seventeen, two thousand twenty-one, eleven a.m. Um, there were two bids received, one was universal ready mix, and the other was Alm Transnet. Uh, universal ready mix is Welsh responsible debt. Um, the street maintenance department utilizes concrete to fill herbs, sidewalks, and take transportation restoration within, uh, within the city. Um, on the, funny, they were operating a unit of two minutes. Um, just your little background, we spent about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars on, on this contract. I recommend you would, the biggest universal ready mix.
How, how do these prices compare? What would currently pay?
Um, I don't have the current range, one, they just have the, the pulse rate is thirty-five dollars per cubic yard. For the universal ready mix, Alm Transnet is a hundred and twenty dollars per cubic yard. So Alm is significantly higher, um, than the proposed price for the universal. But meanwhile, they have different, either different types of concrete that they, they price in, in this city. They're thirty-five, it's, it's site concrete, which is about a hundred per cubic yard. Massa cap, that's eight hundred, which is twenty-seven dollars a yard. Universal cap, so, uh, concrete, eight dollars per cubic yard. Window concrete, seven dollars, eight or, uh, short load, which is a hundred dollars, a hundred decibel. So, uh, these are all essentially low than Alm in this, in this city.
All right, first question. Any questions from the council? All right, any questions for the public? Last time.
Um, I'm trying to figure out the short load, the hundred dollars per cubic yard, but what kind of concrete is that? The short load. Um, I think it does matter what type of concrete it is. So we have, we're, um, sorry. Doesn't matter what type of concrete it is, it's a short load, you can put it in the question. If you say you request a body, uh, that's, that's a cap, that's a concrete, you request a ten dollar load, three dollar load, you play a big change. If you ask for, yeah, I mean, if you don't, for, like, for some reason, a body, not, they probably don't do this very often, but if you want to pour like a very small area with her, or maybe like a sidewalk brand, or if you want to just do a very short, small wall, one more, which isn't, um, they would charge for that.
You charge a hundred dollars extra, so.
Eight dollars. Yeah.
Then that's a hundred dollars.
So they have another common practice, it's not something, uh, you're right.
All right, any other questions from the public? All right, seeing none, let's move on to item seven.
The seventh resolution authorizes the city manager to choose a convenient engineering services to prepare a work resource plan related to potential solar origin to the city's water supply. Oh yes, this is a resolution, authorized the city manager to be approved to perform solar origin intrusion sites. Um, but then once in 2020, we received four proposals to prepare solar origin site. Um, we had six member committee, the values of proposals, learning the valuation costs did not consider it. Um, force proposal is divided into separate, the state and the board. After all meeting members was ready for proposals, the results summarized, and we need to open the force proposals. In this case, a few other workshops consulting, we call highest revenue proposal at the lowest cost of $700,000. The other three consults, uh, prices range from $93,700 to $247,500. They were the lowest at the time. Well, floor levels are low, low standards. Um, just like we have over $750,000, we have less than $10,000, we have $100,000. Um, the city study reports prepare, and we've received lots of floor levels to result in intrusion. The worst thing to do is any question. Um, review existing ground floor models related to the void act of earth, on that amount. They can review certain wall material related to pump plant ends and floor eyes. We can pass the hydrology studies potentially to that amount. We can provide opinion, providing opinion on life and time model existing for some quality location impacted by solar. We can develop options for these locations, and then the solar intrusion. Uh, we can prepare force analysis for those options. And the last one is they can prepare for the fourth of the forms. We are funding, doesn't mean the capital budget is super, it's not $20,000, $20,000. Um, so the money's there, and acquiring that award, uh, this contract, if you don't endorse it, it's all, you're not settled at $10,000. Thank you.
Okay, so you actually just touched on the question I was gonna ask. In the 2018-19 capital plan, uh, that included, which was approved, that included $300,000 for solar intrusion model.
Correct.
So we, so this is the first thing we're doing from the 18-19 capital plan?
Correct. So it's interesting, I had never thought, I didn't know this issue. Again, this is a bad policy lesson, because actually, our, this was small, but as they are, we were paying interest on that one, since I think you said it correct, 2015. So this is, you know, this is an example of what I and myself, and she and I, um, we finished something that I said we were trying to, I think it's those.
Okay, so, so we borrowed the money, but we never actually did it work?
Quite simply, in this case, you're paying interest on that. Um, since we borrowed. So now what we do, like, we were, you and I were very closely authorized, we will not borrow until we're actually ready to make a project. I think that's something we decided, or, you know, through this process, it's not going to pass, that we just authorize, we have the funds, we have the plan, we have actually planned it for it. So it's, it's something that, that we're all very conscious of, we're conscious, I know the law is extremely conscious of, um, so, yeah, that's exactly what I described, that money was authorized to borrow.
Joe, is there any other coordination that you can do with the state, with the state and the federal government, such as the U.S., the Geological Survey, or other administrative organizations, that could also assist us in terms of this analysis? Because it's not just, it's not for per, not just us.
Yeah, I think they, they use a lot of the ground floor model, that existing system. So not a lot of information out there on the pressure or solar interface.
Right.
It's a big question.
Can we coordinate, like Schumer office or other folks to make sure that they either get a copy of it or involve as the takeover?
Absolutely. Do you wish that it does, the annual was probably, would it be okay to pass the report? Because it's two of solar intrusion. No, there's no indication in the annual, what, what fall rate was, how much, why anybody, we have no indication, all levels I mentioned were, um, $750,000, we were less than 10, so we're fine, but it's an easy concern, I mean, it's a big concern, so we, we'd be proud of by doing this, so it's absolutely, I think this is, so. And if this is awarded tonight, what is the, uh, timeframe? Probably days, months, six months, but I'm not sure.
All right, any other questions to the council? All right, any questions? Thank you, Joe.
Yeah, I'm pretty good through all of them.
Joe, I think we may have, can any questions come public? All right, see none, let's move on, item nine.
I'm ready to resolution authorize the city manager purchase towels, tissues, and water responsible for their use. Uh, yeah, yes, this is the resolution authorized the city, the executive city manager to do the purchase, well, the paper, official tissues, and the towels from water responsible for their use in this case, um, which were received in the office of purchasing on Thursday, July 18, 2021, 1:00 AM. They were basically weak products, um, that incorporated bid. So a little bit of paper towels, which was one of the products, apto paper advice, a little bit of plastic products, which is basically, well, they were, United States sales, real simple, and a little bit of official tissue was J S's product. So obviously, what we want to contract is company, the water, the product, which is separated, asked to be, we're three of them, to be products, we've got three of them.
The prices of here, we would not make $300 for all of them, right?
No, I have the correction, actually, we're the absolute president. So the apto, which is, they're one of the products, it's, uh, two volume, all of them down, $12,700, okay? And then that's kind of the way this is structured now. Just a good idea, we could spend about $90,000, exactly. So we, we like to stay in talk, to our presentation, because we were just about thresholding. Previously, we had a quarter, six months, um, except for we've been together, so we can have suggestions for it to be together, and does apply to the same, but the resistance would be the same, because they went out of bid, it's supposed to be a four to six months.
And this is for city by rights, so it's.
Yeah, it's, we want, yeah, exactly, so, yes, correct. I have the strategy, it shows a little bit of prices, so.
Any questions to the council? All right, any from the public? See none, let's move on, item nine.
The resolution authorizing transfer of funds for 2021, I do this year.
Evening, good evening, you guys, and this item, um, is the transfer of funds from the regular salary line items from one department to another, and will be basically to realign the human capital capacity that we have to make the first capital.
Question? So what she, so what she's saying is that the person that was in the building department moved to preparation council, the one who made her salary from the building department to preparation council. Let me make sure the public understood, which is moving the money where the person is working.
Questions to the council? Any from the public?
I'm just not sure, is this another court of counsel, decision to term him or a second figure? Is that the streets of course? It's love, commissioner. The ministry has said, well, the building department, from the building department.
From the building department for its cooperation council. So it's not a new hire, a person from one department above another department?
Because we were short staffed?
Yes.
Any other questions? All right, see none, let's move on, item ten.
And ten is also a resolution authorizing transfer of funds for 2021, 2022, this year.
Okay, this, uh, this transfer requires, um, actually transfer funds from the continued reserves to the used sound services special program. Uh, that's to accommodate our accommodation program, request for one to fund the state chief, what's not, in the budget, and, um, actually, the chief of, for the sound, and general office department, to, um, shot the conversation to, to create a, a, a.
Any questions to the council? And any questions from the public? All right, see none, let's move on, item eleven.
I am looking for a publication, those public area application, the department, requiring it to come as 54, or to come through second floor for a tattoo studio. Decides publication only here, we can help over start it since the end. I have told this resolution authorizing publication for hearing of the board's amendment for a law to succeed, all which are going on to be part. Decides publication only here, we can help over start it since the end. I encourage this resolution authorizing publication to hear of the board's amendment for a court to succeed, all which are going on to be part. Decides publication only here, we can help over start it since the end.
On to the voting portion.
Day before you go on, the public, the carry is going to vote, they're, please, they're voting outside. So it's that way, we're gonna have a public fair.
Don't allow them to just.
On to the vote. Page five, is a resolution establishing based proportions of the corporation's creation warrant, which is moving adoption of this item.
I will.
Second. Voting, that's one of the word.
Yes.
That's one made up.
Yes.
That's one addressed.
Yes.
President McGinnis.
Yes.
President Fendell.
Yes.
And six is a resolution authorizing the city manager to issue a purchase order for the supply transport of regular concrete in the water responsible for their use. Which is moving adoption of this item.
I will.
Second. Voting, that's one of the word.
Yes.
That's one made up.
Yes.
That's one addressed.
Yes.
President McGinnis.
Yes.
President Fendell.
Yes.
And nine is resolution authorizing the city manager to continue services to prepare a work resource plan related to potential solar intrusion into the city's water supply. Which is moving adoption of this item.
I will.
Second.
I will.
Voting, that's one of the word.
Yes.
That's one made up.
Yes.
That's one addressed.
Yes.
President McGinnis.
Yes.
President Fendell.
Yes.
And nine is resolution authorizing transfer of funds for 2021, 2022 fiscal year, which is moving adoption of this item.
I will.
Second. Voting, that's one of the word.
Yes.
That's one made up.
Yes.
That's one addressed.
Yes.
President McGinnis.
Yes.
President Fendell.
Yes.
And ten is resolution authorizing transfer of funds for 2021, 2022 fiscal year, which is moving adoption of this item.
I will.
Second.
I will.
Voting, that's one of the word.
Yes.
That's one made up.
Yes.
That's one addressed.
Yes.
President McGinnis.
Yes.
President Fendell.
Yes.
And ten is resolution authorizing transfer of funds for 2021, 2022 fiscal year, which is moving adoption of this item.
I will.
Second. Voting, that's one of the word.
Yes.
That's one made up.
Yes.
That's one addressed.
Yes.
President McGinnis.
Yes.
President Fendell.
Yes.
And one is resolution authorizing publication for those materials, application of water block requirements, the 54, or to come through second floor for a tattoo studio. Which is moving adoption of this item.
I will.
Second.
I will.
Voting, that's one of the word.
Yes.
That's one made up.
Yes.
That's one addressed.
Yes.
President McGinnis.
Yes.
President Fendell.
Yes.
And two is resolution authorizing publication for hearing of the board's amendment for the waters of the city water, which are going to be part. Which is moving adoption of this item.
I will.
Second. Voting, that's one of the word.
Yes.
That's one made up.
Yes.
That's one addressed.
Yes.
President McGinnis.
Yes.
President Fendell.
Yes.
And finally, and thirteen is resolution authorizing publication for hearing of the board's amendment for the city water, which are going to be part. Which is moving adoption of this item. Second.
I will.
Voting, that's one of the word.
Yes.
That's one made up.
Yes.
That's one addressed.
Yes.
President McGinnis.
Yes.
President Fendell.
Yes.
Do you make motion for those names?
I will.
Second.
No.
Voting, that's one of the word.
Yes.
That's one made up.
Yes.
That's one addressed.
Yes.
President McGinnis.
Yes.
President Fendell.
Yes.
Well, about these, uh, today's papers, I just wanted to announce, uh, the state lobby beautiful, her field contest. So we're looking for your homes within the city to take a picture, please, and send your photo to lbdefense@wolbeachny.gov. Include your name, your address, and your email, and this is the contest that's the way for the city to recognize your residence and properties, but there's duty prime, and they're willing to beautify the city one block at a time. Your photos will be submitted on Long Beach media, and finalists will be posted on the website and the city's Facebook page by August 17. Going to prizes and bragging races and long time. So for more details, again, go to wolbeachny.gov, left minute to date. Thank you.
All right, I think most people don't thrill, but, uh, three minutes, uh, for comments, and, uh, number, first up is Brian Wells.
Good evening, Brian Wells, Long Beach PBA. I just wanted to address the comments that were read, starting my organization tonight and the next week. He said, incredibly, the Long Beach PBA attacked Commissioner Walsh during the police mission, started process, but the moment he began is in position in February. That's simply not true. We never attacked him during the very public police mission, or the service process, and we did not attack him when he first stood with us. In fact, I reached out, we met, we had many conversations, and we talked a lot. We didn't attack him in February, we attacked him in March. In fact, I invited him to a monthly meeting of the PBA membership. To my knowledge, that's never happened before. Man, we were there as well, and, uh, I just think that that is a statement that should be retracted, we did have, we have since had some very public disagreements, but those are about policies, directives, procedures, conduct, and collective bargaining matters. So I don't know what you're basing that statement on, but it's just simply inaccurate. Maybe there's confusion over the timeline, how these events occurred, but it's simply not true. Unless anyone can give me a specific example of when I attacked the police commissioner during service process. All right, well, thank you, and anytime anyone wants to engage me in a bottom manner, you guys all have my number, you know where to find me, I'd be happy to speak with anybody anytime. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Roy Lester.
Roy Lester, uh, very sober presentation today by CMA.
Roy, could you repeat that, Roy?
Sure, uh, very sober presentation today by CMA, and definitely, there's a lot of work to be done, but, um, on June 15, I came up in, I guess, about, um, the contracts we ended into with, uh, M3, the attorneys, and, uh, Donnie said in June, we brought that, in July, we brought that presentation on M3, regarding what they had done, um, you say, for a meeting with them on Thursday, and that since that time, I haven't heard anything. I know that, uh, our contract expired with them, I think it was May 30, and I, I believe we have not gotten the money from the state. We still, although, I don't know if they're continuing to, uh, to fill us, you basically said, um, that they said that they're going to, that I'm going to, obviously, and you're going to watch over that, but I think we as a public would like to know what's going on, it's, you know, it's a lot of money involved, it's a big issue for us, and, you know, I'm hoping we can solve things, but we have kept in the dark completely. Um, I just wanted to get things out. Also, uh, I asked you about the bike program, you said that there's a possibility that the office, some, I don't know, I've never ever even passed that, I didn't assume you probably had to bet them or something, they have South Hampton Company, but I don't know where that is, and some is moving on pretty quickly, so. The work session that you had last Thursday about public, uh, the workforce housing, the affordable housing, um, there were a lot of tax credits that go into that, are any of those tax credits coming from the city? That was another question. And finally, you mentioned that the housing authority is domain for national, I do not know, and authority, I do authority or the ability to make permissions outside of this zone, so, so, like, just in those things.
Okay, so, um, let me go to the bike program, I talked, uh, today, just about the bike program, we had one vendor that responded to the RFP, they're also the same vendor that responded to the RFP for the county, and right now, there's a shortage on bikes, and so, we're at a standstill to think, figure out if they can help NASA County and us, or it might not happen till next year, since there is a shortage on bikes, as in the shortage on a lot of other things. Um, the tax credits, the purpose of the affordable housing, uh, conversation was not about tax credits or anything like that, it was, the purpose was to, to inform the board what a rag was, that the tax credits, the low income housing tax credits do not come from the city.
Okay, that's, that was.
Yeah, that's not the city, they'll are, that's an organization, people, they don't go, and then the, the developer will take the tax credits to the bank, that is not something that comes from the city at all.
Where do you get that?
Um, the, about the Hagerman case, we still meet, uh, both, two or three times a week. We will present.
I'm sure you meet two.
Oh, Melvene.
Oh, okay.
And M3.
Okay.
We are asking M3 as well, that, yes, their contract is up, but they are working with us, but right now, we're doing more work with Oh Melvene, who, although their contract was for a period of time, it also was for $750,000, they haven't reached the $750,000. We are now, uh, still working together, all of us, including CMA, to come up with ideas and things to move forward. When we get to that point, we will then discuss it with the council, and then make it public. But we're not ready to make it public, because as you heard at the last meeting, we did have the initial meeting, uh, with the Hagerman attorney. So as soon as we are ready, we will make it, um, we don't want to come and give hope or tell people things that are completely wrong.
No, but what you told us just, you know, keeps us in the making.
Yeah.
You know, that, that's all we're looking for.
Okay, and what was your last name?
That wasn't.
I have to check that out. Yeah, I, I have a.
Well, it's part of the city.
No, it's not, it's not.
We point, we point to the commissioners, but it's a separate entity from the city.
Absolutely.
Their own budget is better than mine. But ten of the candidates.
You don't know.
No.
All right, thank you.
Jay Gussler.
I'll ask.
Eileen Hatcher.
Eileen Hatcher, Long Beach, I have four questions, but I really need to stop before, because it's been a long night. The boardwalk is, uh, becoming less screwed, and there's a lot of places that people can trip, because the screws are coming out. I'm on there every day, and I see more and more of them, and I thought, one way to find out where they are so they can be fixed, is to ask the specials to somehow mark them, or mark where they are located, so that they can be fixed, because we have been sued in the past by people who have fallen on them, tripped on them, so that's all, please do that, thank you.
Thanks, man.
Thank you, thank you very much. And Sam Fendell.
Yes.
All right, then that's it, thanks for joining us, folks, and, uh, we will see you.
Another PSA, please throw your mats in the garbage, the smartest dog in the world ate one.